There is. Religions. No idea where my stuff went.
I twenty.
By twenty. To the flag, United States of America, and the country for which it stands, one nation under God, neither this law nor this treaty entails this problem.
Welcome, welcome. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Trusty Piper, here. Trusty Frank, here. Trusty Beglin.
Here.
President Burkey.
Here.
Trusty Doorward.
Here.
Trusty Bart's here. Trusty Miley.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were. They all said here. Nobody said president.
You didn't say president.
Yeah, there you go.
You gotta change it up every once in a while. Keep you on your toes.
All right, the next item is for public comments. Anything that is not on the agenda, again, I ask that anybody that wants to speak. Do we have any batteries in that microphone yet? That we know. Well, it does.
That's not.
Not tonight, though. I'm guessing that nobody has any public comments, but if you do, please step up to the microphone and state your name so that we can. That one works just fine, so that we can record your name for the minutes. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is the minutes of May sixteenth, and then the approving of general fund water and sewer invoices. There are no additional bills.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? If not, I'll call it. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a presentation of the oath of office to Sergeant Dan Wolf.
Yes, please. I'm sorry. So Danny, we can't really.
We're gonna swap out my phone, so you can hear.
Yeah, so maybe because they just came like.
Is it gonna be a race who sends them to Chris first?
What's that?
Is it gonna be a race on who sends them to Chris first?
They should all take a picture.
We should and just text him.
And repeat after me. I, Daniel Wolf.
I, Daniel Wolf.
Having been appointed to the office of guardians.
I have been appointed to the office, sorry.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the State of the Country.
The State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duty of said office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability to help with that.
To the best of my ability, so.
So, swan. Thank you.
Congratulations, Serge.
Real quick, I've been here for a long time. I've been here eighteen years.
Oh, no, not another one. Thank you. Congratulations again. Somebody who is definitely not working has joined us on Zoom. I don't know who that might be.
Oh.
No, do what?
Okay. Chris joined.
All right. Ah, crap. Oh, yeah. Next, we have reports on village committees, and the first one would be the planning commission. That was this past Monday, which was June third. It's all right. Really quick. What? No, today's June sixth. Anyway, so we had a planning commission meeting on Monday, and it was very short. We just had a public hearing for the rezoning for the Nine Ladies Dancing Studio. There were no comments, no public comments, and we recommended that to the village board for approval. Oh, that is what I was gonna say. Never mind, we're good. The minutes on the top of the planning commission minutes, it said June sixth. Planning commission.
It did?
Yeah. So.
Excuse me.
That's okay. So it should have been June third. Anyway. I just figured I'd point that out before Don did. Oh, you already did? All right. Okay.
I did it, did really good.
So I had a correction to the minutes I meant to say before we adopted the, before you guys approved them as part of the consent agenda. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I had accidentally listed Director Paulus as having been present at that meeting, and he wanted to make sure that you guys knew and that I had removed it from the minutes that he was not there. And it was an error to have included him.
He was there in spirit, though.
Yes.
He was definitely there in spirit. Excellent. Thank you for that. So that was it for the planning commission. If there's any questions of me, I'll take them, otherwise we'll go over that later. Right, now for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee, trustee Bart's.
So we've been meeting pretty regularly every couple of weeks, and we are plugging away. We're getting down to the wire in the last few minutes, last few things getting wrapped up. We have flyers printed that I will be looking on distributing tomorrow. If anybody else would like to grab some, I can drop them off, and if anybody wants to help distribute around town, that'd be great. Everything is just, we're plugging away. We're still looking for a few volunteers for the dunk tank, but otherwise everything else is on the roll, and we're, we're getting to, we're getting there.
As far as volunteers, you mean like volunteers to sit on the dunk tank?
In the dunk tank.
In the dunk.
Yes.
Who are the volunteers so far? Chris and Dan?
We've got Chris, Dan, myself, and Director Paulus. Also committed to sit, so.
If it's eighty degrees or above, I'll volunteer.
But only if it's eighty or noted.
We, we have quite a few. What do you want?
Feelers out there.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have quite a few feelers out there for people, so we'll see as the time gets closer.
People can nominate people that are there.
Mm-hmm.
There's. Okay.
Yes, so if you show up, Don, and I'm standing around, guess what?
Mm-hmm. But I.
There's a number, you made my, there's a number of people that would, would like that change.
That would be good.
So in other words, stand in line.
Yes, I did have the opportunity this week to go out, and Natalie has taken a ton of pictures for us for our book. I had the opportunity to go out and take a few more and kind of walk around some of the parks that I haven't maybe visited those areas of.
Hmm.
And it's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
I'm pretty excited about this book coming together, and I think it'll be good.
Great, excellent. Any other questions of trustee Bart's? All right, we will move on then. Thank you so much. Items for discussion and our action. First is a motion to approve the rezoning of parcel zero nine three five one three zero zero four zero zero from M One Limited Manufacturing to B two Community Business District. Again, this is what was passed at the planning commission and sent to us for approval. It's in your packet, and this just rezones this parcel so that they are allowed to have their business there.
We'll keep in discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of parcel zero nine three five one three zero zero four zero zero from an M One Limited Manufacturing District to a B two Community Business District.
Second.
Right, is there any discussion or questions or anything? If not, I will call the question. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Looking forward to walking, welcoming them to our community. Next, we have a motion to approve granting permission to Jessica and Erica Stowe to build a fence along the shared lot line between five ten Emerald Hills Drive and our parcel number, which is zero nine zero eight nine zero zero eight five zero zero zero. Do you want to introduce this a little bit?
Yes.
Just kind of tell us why we're here, why we're here.
Well, so I'm surprised to be here too about this.
I'm sorry.
Last year, this board chose to update our fence permitting process to streamline the permitting process for residents. And as part of that, you guys added teeth and a comprehensive description of what a conforming fence would look like. And if that conforming fence met all of our requirements, then they did not need to go before the ARC Board or Plan Commission for approval. So that's like part one of this. So the second part of this is five ten Emerald Drive, Emerald Hills backs on to a parcel that we, the village owns. In the olden days, if they had to go before the Plan Commissioner or ARC Board, if the fence was approved, approval to build on the lot line that was shared between the owner and the village was implicit in that approval. Now that we've kind of streamlined this process, we have this little loophole that doesn't really give the residents a path forward to receive those permissions from the village. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Okay. So here we are. They wish to build a fence. They wish to build directly on the lot line, and we're seeking your permission and approval to do that.
Yep, and so what? I think the question kind of, you know, came to who is, you know, utterly allowed to make that decision, right? Because they, I think they had mentioned, well, maybe the village president can just say yes. I don't know that that's acceptable, so because, you know, the village owns the property, but we are the ultimate decision makers in the village, which is why, right or wrong, I decided that we should bring this before everybody, just so that we can kind of have a formality and make sure that this is done. Moving forward, more than happy to figure out a way to close this loophole, I guess you could say, and kind of figure what we do, but here we are.
Well, this isn't very take that long.
Nope.
And it didn't delay their process at all if they came.
Seeing that it's, it's a peculiar situation where it involves a piece of property that the village owns.
Mm-hmm.
It might be a good idea to have seven minds thinking about it and, and do it once every four years when this turns up.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too.
Yeah. So you have a motion?
I don't, nope.
Okay, I will hold. Then we allow Jessica and Erin Stowe to build a fence that should be on, not along, on the shared lot line between five ten Emerald Hills and the parcel owned by the village.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at all? I'll just mention that the parcel that we own is what will be the extension of Deer Metal Drive. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have this awesome floodplain management that I know that our village clerk is excited to have us pass. So this is again, was brought before us twice, once last time to take a look at, and then it went through planning commission and everything else as well, and we are now ready to approve this if we so choose.
Yeah, we have a deadline of July first on this.
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth. Oh, so we're, we're ahead.
We, well, we worked hard in April to get all of our ducks in a row to be ready in time. So there's a little more to come if you choose to approve it tonight. There's a little bit more live work to do, so we should be done just in time. Just under the deadline.
So I'll hold that we adapt the revised chapter three oh six of the floodplain management into our village code of ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item?
I was just wondering, now, is, is, this is an update?
It actually, it actually replaces the existing ordinance. So the, so FEMA updated the county floodplain map.
Mm-hmm.
And so our process could have been just updating our ordinances to adopt those maps. But because we were so outdated, ours hasn't been updated since two thousand eight, the DNR and FEMA said now is the time. You have to update the rest of your ordinance to be in compliance with state and federal statute. And if you don't, let's see, I gave them a direct quote, "Communities that fail to enact the necessary floodplain management regulations will be suspended from the National Floodplain Insurance Program immediately." So they were pretty firm about, about the necessity to do this work in a timely way.
Okay. So worst case scenario, what if a disaster happens, a big flood? FEMA says you're not in compliance with this.
Yeah, we're, we'll wash our hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, that's important.
It is. Any other discussion on?
There was a whole lot that changed between the old one and the new one. Most of it was supposed keeping and updating and stuff like that.
I think one of the.
Because things change over what was been like fifteen years, they say.
No, well, John, things become unapplicable.
Yeah.
To what's going on in the world and whatnot, so.
Tell me if I'm wrong, I think one of the bigger changes is that structures that were built in floodplains. It used to be that you can't repair them or replace them. I believe that one of the stipulations that's in that ordinance now is that you, you, you can replace those structures, so. Previously, it was hurting a lot of people that were maybe grandfathered into something, right, when they bought a property and then gets flooded and it's lost. Well, now FEMA or the DNR is saying, yeah, you can, you can rebuild in that floodplain as long as you are up to conforming standards that will withstand floods.
Okay.
So.
Thanks for that info.
Yeah. Any others? All right, I'll call the question, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, big weight off your shoulders, for sure. All right, next is a motion to approve an agreement with Ellers to conduct a long-range cash flow analysis and sewer rate study, so this is why the person that's definitely not working has been logged into Zoom, because he would like to speak a little bit to this. It had to do with a meeting that we had with Public Works that Ellers was involved with looking at our sewer rates and what our actual, what we pay and how our sewer utility is performing, so if he can hear, if he wants to introduce something or talk about.
Can you hear me okay?
Meh.
Testing, one, two, three.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't look at the thing while he's talking because of racing the lift or anything.
Hmm.
Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me now? Yes, no, maybe?
A little trouble, would you?
We can, we can hear you a little bit. We'll just have to all be very, very quiet while you talk. How's that sound?
Okay, and I'll try to speak louder, too.
Okay, it's perfect. Go for it.
Okay. All right, so the Public Works Committee met a few weeks ago and discussed this as well. To give everybody some background, a few years ago now, the prior Public Works Director slash engineer had started going down the process of upgrading the wastewater treatment plant. Now, there are some true needs that that plant has, and if you ask Director Paulus, there's definitely some wants that he would love to add to the plant, too, while we're there upgrading things. We don't know necessarily what that needs or wants list is yet. Strand is working on that, and then that'll ultimately result in a, in an estimate of, okay, if you want to do all of these things, this is how much it's gonna cost. But before we even get there, we need some guidance on, on if our current sewer rates are up to snuff. And so that's what this long-range cash flow analysis and sewer rate study does. So they take a full look at our entire sewer fund. They look at our cash flow, how much we're making every year, what are expected expenses and income over the next how many years? And they say, based off of all that data, are the income levels of your sewer rates enough to justify not only your current expenses, but any future borrowing that we might do for an upgrade? So again, to give guidance, not only to staff, but to Public Works as we find out more information on a potential upgrade. Doing this study would be really valuable, because it would, it would then allow us to not have that opinion come from me, not come from Director Paulus, not come from the Public Works crew, but have an outside third party say, hey, you know what, your rates really should be at this amount, and it'll give us projections for the next how many years and what our rate scale should be. So it won't be a question from year to year. It'll be clear guidance on what we should be doing. So hopefully that answers in a short, short summary, and I'm happy to answer other questions.
All right, thank you for that. And it looks like via the staff comments and the request for board consideration, it looks like this is broken up into a couple of different payments, correct?
Correct. So I would say tonight you are, we are looking for recommendation to approve phases one, two, three, and four. And then that final one that is, that is assistance with, for applying for the clean waterfall, one phone, sorry, clean water fund loan. You wouldn't be doing that until we potentially borrow money for that upgrade. And you should see an example in your packet of another study that they did, so you'll see this kind of what it's gonna look like when they bring forward our information.
So the first two studies are gonna cost us twelve five, correct?
The total of all of their studies are, costs us twelve five, yeah.
For all phases is twelve five?
Correct, yeah.
You were asking the first two phases.
Well, I think we're asking to approve this phase one through four, I believe.
But he asked how much it would cost from first two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The first two phases are four thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's if you want to proceed to phase three, then.
And three is like, what was three? It was like seven thousand? Well, we've got a, we have to do all this anyhow. The, the last phase is elective, that would be the first four, correct? And that would be the affordability analysis?
Which one are you looking at?
He's saying that the last phase is, would be, well, it'd be voluntary. That would be done after, if we decided that we wanted to have the assistance, right, the clean, of the clean water fund loan application?
Correct.
Okay.
There's, if you look at your last two pages in your packet. These are the results. Now, this wasn't our study. This was a study of, what was it, Oak Ridge or something like that?
Oak, Oakfield.
Oakfield.
Oakfield, yeah. Their results were that over four years, they had, were in need of increasing their volume charge and user charge both by about four hundred percent over four years. Where a quarterly, a quarterly water, a utility bill went from, I don't know if there's a sewer bill or a utility, a utility bill quarterly went from hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents to five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents a quarter. And then it stayed at that. It's, you know, then they did an affordability analysis, which is the last page. And they found that the number of people that living in their service area, so the number of their customers. There were quite a few of them that were under twenty-five thousand dollars a year as far as annual income. And generally, those are your social security people. And they found out that they were paying upwards of almost five percent of their annual income for, for their utility bills. And I want to make sure that we get, if, if it comes to where it looks like it might be something like that, that we also do a affordability study to get the raw numbers as to how many people we're gonna be putting out of their house.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is serious stuff. Right now, our average water bill is probably somewhere around a hundred seventy, hundred eighty bucks, something like that. So imagine.
Two fam, for a two-person household.
For a two-person household?
Yeah, I would say families have. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some that have higher, but can you imagine that's like almost seven hundred bucks a quarter? Going up to that from where you're, you're going now, so. We, we need to make sure that we have all of our studies in, and before we approve what the needs and wants are, because we might, we might need to do a little trimming off of those needs to keep this in a affordable area.
Agreed. Well, and I think the other reason why I do like doing this study is we can, we can say, oh, yeah, you know, based on our budgeting and everything, it looks like our, you know, our fund is here, and we might need to do some replacement, but a lot of that is educated guesses, right? Like, I like this idea of somebody saying, okay, this is how much this could cost over a time period. This is where you are now, and here's how you have to make sure that you're not having these crazy rate increases and all those things, too. So I'm, I'm a big believer in the more information you can get and have on your side for when you're deciding things, the better. So this would be something that, I mean, makes sense to me.
Yeah, historically, we used the depreciation as a balancer in both of the accounts.
Hmm.
And that wars against you when you're trying to develop funds for paying off debt, because you're starting a whole new beginning, so.
Right.
We have to really emphasize that the numbers we should be focusing on when they come with the different scenarios are the ones that satisfy feeling in the hole of our, of our depreciation and starting from there
Mm-hmm.
to go forward, so. These are gonna be important numbers. They might be a little high and a little scary.
Mm-hmm.
But we need to have them all and, and really think about them when they get here.
Right.
Did you see that ultimately what they were paying was five hundred dollars a quarter for their water bills?
Well, that's what, that was Oakfield.
That's what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, be, before the, the study of the need, with, with the need put in place, they, their month, their quarterly utility bills went up four hundred, went up four times. From hundred forty-four to two hundred forty, or five hundred.
Yeah.
And that was, we retired feathers, run out of tongue.
Mm-hmm.
And that'd be the right thing to do with us.
No.
We, you know, we have.
I agree with you.
We have to guard against.
A little start.
Great.
Right.
I, I believe. I'm sorry, I believe this example was picked because, one, it's a like-sized municipality to us, and, two, they are also on the cusp of doing a huge wastewater treatment plant upgrade, so my guess is that that jump in price was probably to pay for whatever borrowing that they ended up doing.
Right. And I think a lot of this, again, does depend on what needs to be done and when, right? So this big wastewater treatment plant upgrade that has been in the works for a few years that we've been talking about since I was on the board first, right? That was anticipating a big jump in population that we just have not had yet. So I don't want, I don't want us all to start freaking out a little bit and saying, oh, we're gonna be doing this whole thing, and we're gonna be raising sewer rates and stuff, because our population just hasn't done what we thought it would might do by that time period. So our wastewater treatment plant, while yes, there are some things that need to be fixed, it's still holding the capacity that we're at, so this is informational only, and I would say that it was, it is to help us better, make better decisions moving forward as we get closer to those upgrades that need to be done.
Are the studies part, did we budget for that?
Hmm. Good question. I don't know that we budgeted specifically for the studies, for the study, but I know that we we have the funds in the sewer utility to use. If I'm not mistaken.
Correct. We have a kind of a, a catch-all line item called other operating expenses that still has a good amount of money in it, so that's the line item that we would charge us to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, as I lived in town for, since seventy-nine. And the town has gotten about maybe two hundred fifty people larger than it did when I first moved in.
Mm-hmm.
So all of the finest guy, all by the time twenty twenty rolls around, we're gonna have four thousand people that's in there. And the twenty fifty studies, which I think is an unbelievably wasteful amount of time to study against. You know, depending what you're studying.
Mm-hmm.
They've got our numbers way up there, and we have to, we can afford to plan and do what's actually gonna happen and maybe a little more. But the numbers that we're getting from the Plan Commission and their.
Comprehensive plan?
Yeah, comprehensive. The numbers we're getting from them is, they're just not realistic.
Right.
They never have them. Their eyes were optimistic, we all were, though.
Mm-hmm.
Don, are you saying you're skeptical of this study?
No, no, I, I, I like this study.
Okay.
I love this study. We're gonna need these numbers, and we can have a, a third. We'll have scenario one, scenario two. We can have a scenario three with what we think the population will probably be in those brackets of numbers and maybe a little more. Because we've got a long history of not growing very much at all. You know, Sackville and Grafton and, and where did everybody grow like crazy? They're just not gonna be coming up here.
Right.
Until they're full. When they build a Microsoft plant and everybody leaves town, well, then, you know, then we won't have a problem. We'll have enough, enough money to, to pay them, so.
Right, and I would just say again, you know, we do, despite the fact that maybe we don't need a completely updated or upgraded larger wastewater treatment plant, there are repairs that need to be done. And I think this, this use, you know, can, this study will take a look at those repairs that need to be done, and we can say, oh, right, we, you know, in order to pay for this, we need to raise our rates to this amount or make sure that we're raising them to this amount, regardless of what we end up doing.
Well, our last Public Works meeting was apparent that there's some upgrading. Well, our last public works being apparent that there's some upgrading.
Yeah.
On wastewater.
Yeah, cause this will give us an actual um life expectancy on a lot of our equipment that.
Correct.
That's old, you know.
Yeah.
And we're still on those same lines, well, this should last you forty years, you know. Well, now that we're thirty years down the road. We have, well, how much is it gonna last? Is it gonna last fifteen or five?
Right.
Um, all those figures are gonna help us figure what we actually need to do. And have a little bit of money left over to maybe do a road or something like that. We've got a lot of different things to do other than um, than wastewater treatment and, and uh water towing.
Hmm.
Well, the more, more information we have, the better.
That's how I am. That's how I feel about it. Yep.
I agree.
All right, anybody willing to tackle this one?
Well, what's our administrators uh suggested resolution?
If you'd like to, yep.
I make a motion to approve agreement with elders to conduct a long range cash flow analysis and sewer spray study.
I have a motion.
Is that all that you wanted? Uh, Jan, uh, trust?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Is there any other discussion before I call the question on this? Any more information that anybody wants, needs, feels a need to ask any?
How long is it gonna take to get these studies back?
A year.
I thought they said ninety days.
Yeah.
About a year, is that what you said, Don? This isn't the state we're dealing with. This is elders.
Yeah, I suppose.
All right. Any other questions? Now I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I do not believe we have any correspondence. Items for future consideration, the one thing that I have is our upcoming meetings. So I don't know if anybody's got a calendar in front of them, but um, the first meeting in July happens to fall on the fourth of July, which I will not be here for. And I hope none of you are either. So I am tentatively thinking, we're gonna see how everything plays out in the next couple of weeks. But I'm thinking that we'll have the meeting on the twentieth and then I'm thinking about skipping the one on the fourth. And depending on how everything works out, we might do one on the eleventh, but if not, then we'll do the eighteenth and be back on schedule on the first of August, if that makes sense.
I like that.
Okay. So just to kind of keep your eye on that, but there'll be more communication that'll come out over that. No problem. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a comment uh about today's date. I don't know if I probably should have brought this up uh. At the beginning of, with the public uh course, or the public comments.
Go ahead.
Anybody know what today's date is?
Okay.
June sixth, eightieth anniversary of D D A.
Yep.
I think we should remember those who uh sacrificed for us and we have a great country like we have and have the freedoms we have, so.
Agreed.
I just wanna make that uh known to everybody.
And there was a whole pilot that ended up in the sand.
Yeah. Omaha Beach was a, was a murder zone.
More than half.
Yeah, yeah. How many of us would wanna do that?
I don't know of any of us that would wanna really do that.
Yeah, so we're thankful for that.
Yes, we are. Well said, well said indeed.
I would have, I would have, just because it's what you have to do.
Hmm. All right, anything else? If not, we are in order to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries at seven thirty-four. Thank you.
Hello, sir. How are you?
What, what big stuff?